I'm glad to hear that. I still need to contact you. I told you I would do that in the last meeting. The days have gotten away from me. Like, I've got to be with you. I've got two more, three more that I need to...
Striving party.
Yeah, if you hear a loud, like, terrain type sound, we're up at tornado.
Warning. Warning or watch?
It's a south shore sound.
I don't know, they both start with a W.
Oh, she says warning.
Warning.
Warning. That means they've spotted one.
In Grant's area.
I don't know what that is.
Way south.
Oh, okay, so we don't have warning. All right, good. I come from Oklahoma, we just really have it.
Yes.
We usually get a copy of the... We just have strong winds here.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's strong winds.
Little, um...
I don't have... I'm sorry, the ones here, yeah, they take...
Yeah, but we always have one here, because I don't have a printer at home.
There was a sign, there was a...
School board members don't have printers at home.
Yeah.
Or a house. Maybe the cows still stay there.
Oh, it's up in the tree.
Oh, okay.
It picks up, the ones in Oklahoma picks up.
Yeah, but I don't have a printer at home to print them. We have nothing, Michelle.
My turn to get y'all out?
Usually mine.
I'm handicapped today.
Okay, well, it looks like one.
Okay, I opened it like this.
Okay, we all sat?
See, I'm used to being on a budget, so, see, we don't normally kind of floor tri-fold.
Okay, good afternoon. The board workshop for September 13, 2016 is now in session. Pam, roll call, please.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Ms. Neese?
Presently here.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
And Mr. Craig.
Okay, will we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This workshop has been called for the board to have a conversation with our new lobbying group, Capital City Consulting. Welcome, thank you for joining us. At this time, I'm going to turn the workshop over to Dr. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler and members of the board. Quickly, I'll go over a high-level outline of what this afternoon's workshop hopes to accomplish. We'll certainly start out with an opportunity for each board member to introduce themselves and kind of highlight some of their legislative priorities and/or concerns, and then we'll give Capital City consultants an opportunity to introduce themselves, talk about their approach and their previous successes. And then we'll go into an overview led by Capital City on the current legislative climate, a few bullet points to discuss there. And then I'll spend some time discussing the collaborative board kind of staff legislative priorities based on the canvassing that we did with board members and cabinet members. Show you how that kind of rolls into one. And then the bulk of the time, we'd like board members to then discuss, and then out of that discussion via your input, we will have the necessary information to go back and finalize our legislative platform. So with that in mind, I'll turn kind of the conversation over to, back to Mr. Ziegler as chairperson, to go down the line of all the board members and just kind of talk to Capital about who you are, how long you've been on board, and some of your legislative concerns.
Okay. I'll start off, Andy Ziegler, chairman, in my eighth year on the board here. I spend a lot of time actually out in the community, building relationships with all the elected officials and looking to solidify partnerships for the school district. I'm looking to do more of that at the state level, something that, I guess, down here we don't really have the knowledge like you have up there to be able to know how all that works. So we do our best, I think we've done pretty well to date. We're looking for your guidance. My concerns or my thoughts going forward, although I'm going to let the board members get into some specifics, I'm interested in what are some of the educational opportunities that we might be able to leverage based on things like, you know, with the governor's plans or legislative direction, and what kind of strategies can we put together, specifically looking for guidance and, you know, where do board members come in helping to talk to people about that versus you? How do we, the partnerships that we can maybe forge with other districts or even maybe with collegiate to do things to benefit the school district? And also, just to, because this is a public meeting, I realize there are some things that require a strategy to get accomplished, and you don't necessarily want to lay it all out in front of the public before you figure out how to go about accomplishing things. So some things will be vague. I believe that we are pretty well aligned on a lot of our needs, and Mrs. Henderson has always done a great job of aligning those legislative priorities for us and defining them and working with the FSBA. So I'm going to leave it at that for now, and we're going to, we'll start at the end with Mrs. Henderson, since she's probably the most well-versed in specifics.
I've been on the board for eight years, since I've been on the board for the last eight years. This is last year and this year, it's the first year that we've actually had an increase in funding. As you know, that the first six years I was on the board, all we did was make cuts. And so I'm looking forward to moving forward on that. And as Mr. Ziegler said, I've been on the Legislative Committee for Florida School Board Association and have been the point person for Brevard Public Schools for our district priorities. I've worked with the Central Florida Coalition in the past with that as well, and with FADS, because we want to, I believe if we're all talking the same language, at least on some major issues, if you have 67 superintendents and 67 districts all talking the same language, and we can give that information to our parents, that's where we can get the most bang for our buck. So, and I don't know if you want to go into the things that are priority for me or just introductions at this point.
Let's just start with introductions as opposed to details, get to know each other, and then we could evolve into more specifics.
Oh, in addition, sorry, but in addition, I've, over the last six years, because I've been on the legislative committees up in Tallahassee, I've gotten to know a lot of the members of the education committees, which is helpful because they're the ones who actually decide what goes forward. So if you can get to some of them beforehand, it's very helpful in our favor.
Hello, I'm Amy Neese. I'm the old one sitting here. I've been here for 12 years. I'm completing my 12th year. I always tell people I have the gray hair and the wrinkles to prove it. I've been through three superintendents, multiple senior staff, and have seen the changes from 69,000 students up to 75,000 students, back down to 73, and we're back in that growth mode again, and have seen the changes from class size to backing down to class size average, to seeing the money come in, to the recession hit, to seeing now the growth come back in. So have seen a lot of changes, seen a lot of positives, seen a lot of negatives, and very excited to see a new board member come in and take this seat, but have a lot of history to offer, have seen a lot of trends that work, and hopefully see a lot of trends that will never come back to see the light of day again.
I am Ms. Steve Belford. I have been on the board for two years now, so one of the newer board members, although I have been advocating for educational issues for probably about eight since my oldest started school and I got very involved in advocating at the school level and also doing some advocacy in Tallahassee on behalf of education. So I am very excited to hear what you all bring to the table as far as looking at things from a different perspective and helping us to really forge those relationships that are critical to our success when it comes to education. So I'm eager to hear what you have to say today, and thank you for being here.
Mr. Craig?
Good afternoon, my name is John Craig. I also have known for almost two years, it was November when we took off, so almost two years. Most of all, I'm a parent of two children in this district, and the whole reason my wife owns her engineering company here was because of the great schools of Brevard. I say that because Brevard historically has led in so many ways, both in development policy at the state level, and I'm excited about working with you all to continue that trend. I think we have some great ideas, we often have some great solutions, we need some help to figure out how to get those needs in front of our people. I appreciate you helping.
I'll turn it over now to Nick and let you introduce your team and tell us about yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the board. We really appreciative to be here and speaking with you all today, and honored to be representing you guys up in Tallahassee, and really look forward to a collaborative relationship on finding ways to improve the legislative agenda of the district here. And a couple of the things you have already just said in the round robin that you just did have struck a chord with me, and I'll come back and talk about a few of those things, but they're very positive, and it makes me feel good about some of the level of engagement that you guys have had and some of the key things that you just threw out there that I think we'll talk about as we move forward here with our strategy moving forward. From an introductory perspective, my name's Nick Irossi, I'm one of the founding members of Capital City Consulting. We've been around since 2003. Prior to that, I was at a law firm where I practiced law and did legislative work. Prior to that, I was on staff in the House and in the Senate and the Legislature and was student body president at Florida State University, which is how I got my initial kind of taste into politics. But our firm is one of the highest-ranked firms, I don't know, Dr. Blackburn.
Now we understand.
I apologize for that. I see.
I already told him the lanyard is just absolutely disgusting that he's wearing right now, but we'll let that slide. I think Capital City Consulting is well-positioned to help you guys, because we're one of the prominent lobbying firms in the state of Florida. We've built a very solid book of business because of the people that we have. I mean, that's the bottom line. We're very selective of the people that we hire, and you're going to meet two of them today, who are two of our superstars who are working on this account with me. There are six other lobbyists that we have within the firm that we draw upon as needed. I think it's always important to have a throat to choke, so to speak, and I'm that throat. So if things are not going well, I'm here before you so that you can choke me and tell me what we need to be doing better. But we have the resources, as a large firm in Tallahassee, to not only be able to get to all 160 members of the Legislature, the governor and the cabinet, but to be able to dispel these resources upon the Legislature when needed because of all the people that we have, because all of us are going to have unique relationships with different members of the Legislature that are needed at different times. So it's important that you have enough critical mass to be able to cover the areas that you need to. And all the issues that we're involved in, because our firm represents a myriad of clients, you know, we're not the traditional just education lobbyists where we know just the education people, because although that's helpful at the early stages of the committee process, as legislation and as the budget process progresses forward, you have to be able to get to everybody, and you have to be able to build coalitions. And so the fact that we work in so many areas, I think, helps us with the ability to be able to touch everybody and have relationships with everybody in the Legislature and draw upon those resources. So when you are in Tallahassee, I know that, you know, we have Brevard Days up there, and also we would encourage you to come participate even outside of that, if to the level that you would like to. You're always welcome to use our offices, they're downtown, a block from the Capitol, and we have plenty of space for people to come in and utilize, and happy to set up meetings strategically to help foster the relationships, because when we get into strategy, we're going to talk a little bit about why that's so important. But before I do that, let me go ahead and allow Chris and Jen to introduce themselves, and then we'll keep progressing here.
Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me? Sorry. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jen Gaviria. I joined the firm back in 2014, and prior to joining the firm, my experience dates back to a time when I was a student at Florida State and began interning in the Florida House of Representatives with then-House Member Anna Terry Flores, who's currently a sitting senator from Miami-Dade County. At the time, she was the vice chair of Education Policy, and then the following year was appointed Education Appropriations Chairperson. So that was an interesting experience for me. I gained a lot of information and insight into the appropriations funding process for education and all of the moving parts that it has. After that, I ran her Senate campaign back in 2010, which was her first run at the Senate, and we successfully won that. And I joined her in the Senate, and following about a year and a half in the Senate, I left and went to law school full-time. And upon graduation from law school is when I joined the firm. So thank you for having us here today, and looking forward to speaking and learning more about Brevard County Public Schools.
And Jen is getting married next weekend, so if there's any nerves, that's why. She's not nervous about this at all. I had to make the joke.
Well, then, if there's a tornado, we need a protector at all costs.
Exactly.
Thank you for having us. My name is Chris Scunover. I've been with the firm for six years now. Prior to joining the firm, I was on House Representative Staff as a staff attorney for about two years, and then before that, I worked for the House as well for another combined three years. I've worked in the governor's office as well under Governor Jeb Bush. And like Nick, I'm a former student body president at FSU as well, and actually, when I was student body president, I actually was a student member on the Florida Board of Governors. So I've dealt with the State Board of Education on quite a few issues dating back to my time on the board. Satellite, Brevard County is like a second home to me. I already mentioned this to some of you. My wife actually graduated from Satellite High, Satellite Beach High. So I'm down here quite a lot. My in-laws live over in Satellite Beach, so we're down here. So it's kind of special to represent you all, because I've heard so much about Satellite Beach, and I'm here so much, and my wife is a proud graduate of it. So once again, thank you for having us, and I definitely look forward to working with each and every single one of you in the coming year.
So, Mr. Chairman, as you can see, I mean, we're pretty selective about the pedigree of people that we hire. We want somebody who's, A, knows the process very well on the inside, which we've all worked on the inside, actually, just about everybody in our firm has spent years on the inside, working in the Legislature or in the executive branch. And then the quality of people we hire, we're all, you know, pretty much, we describe ourselves as grinders. We learn the issues well, and then a lot of lobbying is strategy, and a lot of it is deployment of that strategy, and that just requires a lot of shoe leather. So we're at the Capitol non-stop, and we're around the state non-stop. I mean, most of us are traveling, you know, three, four days a week this time of year during the elections, fundraising, and meeting candidates, and talking to legislators about our clients' issues. We've actually started that process even for you guys as of this week. We've met with several legislators about a few of your issues, and we'll talk about some of that with the legislative relationships building that we want to deploy. But I think one of the things that set us apart from some of the other firms out there and why we've been successful is that lobbying is really a two-pronged strategy. You have to be political enough to be able to raise money, to have the access and get to know folks, and that's a very important piece and a difficult piece, the fundraising part, and just the time that you spend with legislators, building those relationships so that you earn their trust. And then the other side is just the substance, and learning your clients' issues, learning the policy behind them, being able to read, evaluate legislation, write and draft amendments on the fly, and make legal interpretations with a legal background that we all have, I think is helpful. But also, it's just reading. I mean, it's, quite frankly, just diving into the issues and learning the policy so that you can get up and testify in front of committees or on the fly, be able to talk to a legislator about a policy issue, and you've got someone on the other side pushing the other direction and win the argument. And that's, I think that combination of those two things is what's made us successful, and I think it'll make us successful for you guys going forward. Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I think that's the introduction part. I don't know if you want me to just continue on to approach and successes or whatever your pleasure.
Yeah, that, as well as if you start talking about what you feel the climate is going to be for education.
Yes, sir.
This coming year and the following year.
Yes, sir. So our approach, first of all, we have kind of a four-pronged approach that we typically take in lobbying with our clients, and it kind of melds into what we were just talking about, about having the political side and the substance side together. Number one is the education part, and that's what we're starting today. We actually started it when Michelle and Dr. Blackburn came up to Tallahassee and gave us a briefing on a lot of the issues and some of the concerns that you guys have and that you're seeing in the district. And that process is continuing right now, and will be an ongoing process in the coming months before the election and before we get into the committee weeks process, and that is us learning Brevard. We're very familiar with K through 12 issues and education issues in general. We've been lobbying for them for years, so they're not new issues to us, but your district-specific needs are new to us. So getting up to speed over the next month or so will be critical for us to be successful in developing a strategy and agenda. The second thing which leads into that is development of the actual strategy. One of the things that we really would like to focus on with you guys, and Chairman, you mentioned talking with some of the local officials here, is integrating you into that process more with our state legislators, making them own some of these projects and issues and concerns that you all have here, because that's the only way that we're going to be able to be successful up there. There has to be a parochial component to this in order to be successful. Legislators in Tallahassee can oftentimes feel insulated from what's going on back home when they're in what we call the capital circle bubble up there, and it's important for us to make sure that they're reminded from people back home and have a connection to people back home about what the real, true needs of their district are. So that'll be a big part of our strategy. And then, you know, the third thing is implementation and execution of that strategy, and again, that takes time. That's really just a matter of spending a lot of time with these people, drafting the appropriate materials, and a grassroots-type lobbying effort, but doing so in a strategic way where we're showing legislators how our projects, our initiatives are creating some type of return on investment. And I'll use that term a lot today, return on investment, because that's a key term with the Republican Legislature and with the governor. And defining return on investment does not necessarily mean a dollar figure. It can be performance, it can be student outcomes. So please don't think I mean that you have to actually generate a return on a capital investment. It can be looked at as an investment that you're making in the school district produces better outcomes, and that's an important piece, but we do have to demonstrate what that ROI would be in order to be successful. And then, you know, the fourth thing from an approach standpoint is, of course, the monitoring lobbying and reporting. The Legislature moves, you know, when they, especially when they get into the 60-day session, moves at the speed of light, and things change constantly. And so it's important for us to not only be on top of everything going on, but be communicating with you, and I think that you'll find that you'll be inundated with information from us, and we'll be seeking feedback quite a bit, quite frankly, but that's the only way that we'll be able to be successful and respond to these, you know, quickly evolving sessions and ultimately have the best chance for success. So our past successes are, I mean, are, quite frankly, are numerous. I mean, I'll, you know, we've been doing this a long time, so we've had a lot of them. I will talk about a few from last year, so it's most recent. One of the ones that we're very proud of is passing of the legacy Florida legislation and funding. It was a, it was literally the second-to-last bill that passed during the session right before the finance and tax package, which we also had a big thing in. So we were sitting there till the last minute, but we represent the Everglades Foundation, and one of the things that was a priority for them is getting dedicated funding source for Everglades restoration and for cleaning the St. Lucie and Clusahatchee rivers. We drafted the legislation and lobbied for funding. It's a dedicated revenue source over a 10-year period that brings in well over $1 billion of dedicated funding. So it's not often that you can tout that you've gotten over $1 billion in funding, you know, for a client, but that's one that we spearheaded, wrote, and lobbied for and passed this session, so we're very proud of that one. And that's a blend of policy and a blend of appropriations, which are usually the most difficult things to get done, because that money had to be spent in a certain way, and we had to draft, we draft the bill, helped draft the bill that dedicated where that funding went and got the money to attach to it. So that was one of our biggest successes of this past session, and I know Chris and Jen have one each that they'll talk about as well.
Want to go first this time? Yeah, I'll go first this time, why not? We have the pleasure of representing New College of Florida, and a lot of people don't know who that is. It's actually the state's liberal arts public college/university over in Sarasota. And New College is so unique because with less than 1,000 students, they're constantly struggling to make, to find funding sources to, they can't rely just on tuition income, right? With about 800 students, it just doesn't make ends meet. So every year, they come to us, and we basically are their voice in Tallahassee. And unlike the Florida, unlike Florida and FSU, they don't have, you know, half the Legislature as alumni. They don't, unfortunately. So we are their, we're it, and we constantly fight for them, we have to fight for them, we have to find ways to make legislators, you know, understand what their concerns are, why they're important. And one specific project, which actually impacts this area, is last year and the year before, we've worked to get New College money, startup money, and we had to change statute to begin the state's first master's program in big data. We had, they were hearing a lot of concerns from a lot of the big companies like Charis Corporation here, and Spacecoast has said, "We're having to look out of state for all these quality students. We have these great students that want to, you know, stay in Florida after getting their bachelor's degree, but they have to, you know, to get their masters, but there's just nowhere for them to go." So we were successful last session in getting about half a million dollars in the budget to begin that state, the state's first program, and half of it is recurring for the faculty hires and half of it's for startup costs. And, you know, we'll continue to fight in the coming years to increase that program as it grows, because they've already, you know, the enrollment was unbelievable, they got such a great response. So that's a big achievement for such a small school that's sometimes ignored, to actually come out in front and take, get a lot of accolades and notoriety for it.
And just to piggyback off of that, we also represent Florida International University, which is a public university down in Miami, Florida, with several campuses. Last year, most recently, we were instrumental in obtaining about $15 million in PICO funding requests for two different capital projects, which was a big win, because, as you know, PICO is such a small pot of money that there is a lot of fight over. So that was, you know, that comes down to the last few days of session, but we were able to do that. And then, in addition to that, we worked on a programmatic funding issue, which was an integrated program that the school started off as a pilot program, only within certain colleges of the university, and then expanded university-wide this past year. And what that does is it is aimed at increasing the passage rates in gateway courses. So that's your Algebra I courses, your biology courses, that students have to take as freshmen and sophomores in order to get into their major. And so along with performance, funding, and accountability measures, a lot of issues, students face a lot of issues with passing these courses and then just drop out of college. So to increase the passage rates and graduation rates and getting students into their majors, they started this program and targeted that, and that's called FIU Uplift. So we were instrumental in getting $3 million for them last year, which was non-recurring, and so we will fight for that again this coming year and hopefully try to make some of that recurring.
And before I go on to the legislative landscape, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to just go back briefly to the approaches, because the one thing you said about partnering up with legislators and getting to know them better, and I expressed that that's something that we, that's critical and that we're going to need to do. The other thing that Board Member Henderson said, two things you said, that definitely telegraph your experience with the legislative process that are critical and that I want to point out. One is the coalition building. When you have, and that's something that we do quite a bit of, not only in education, but in everything that we do, because it's critical, there's more success in numbers. The more people you have lobbying for something, the better off you are. So working with the other school districts, when you have 67 school districts all rowing in the same direction, your chances of success are much greater than if you're not. So working with the other 67 school boards and their lobbyists on legislation and initiatives of common interest is going to be critical, and I wanted to mention that because that is part of our approach. And the other thing you said, which we're in the process of doing now, which you're right on about, is getting to members early. And you mentioned committee members, and right now, we're not totally sure who's going to be on those committees. I mean, obviously, going into the next session, we'll know, but we don't expect to know what the committees look like until after the election in November. They have an organizational session kind of right before, a week before Thanksgiving, and that's typically when they'll appoint at least the chairs of the committees, and sometimes they'll make the committee announcement, but we may not even know that until December. But we have an idea, you know, we gather intelligence from members of leadership of who we think is going to be the chairs of the relevant committee. We find out who's requested to be on the education committee, and we're starting to hit those people now. We've done that, we've done that this week, as a matter of fact. So I'm just pleased to hear the recognition that, A, working with coalitions and, B, getting to people early is critical, because lobbying is not a 60-day-a-year job. It's just, if you did that, you lost. It's starting now, it's meeting with people early, it's raising money, building relationships, talking about the issues, and identifying who your champions can be. And this year, that's going to be particularly important, Mr. Chairman, as I get to the legislative landscape. landscape. It's not a great one, to be honest. It's a bad one. You know, Board Member Nisi, I think you talked about, you know, your time on, on this board, being the person here the longest, and have lived through a couple of bad cycles of, of economic downturns and a recession. And I can remember, I started lobbying shortly after September 11th. As we pass the anniversary here of, of September 11th, I started lobbying right after that, and we took, we had to cut about a billion and a half dollars out of the existing budget because people weren't flying to the state anymore, tourism went down, and revenues were down. And then, of course, in 2007, when the market crashed, we had to cut, you know, two and a half, $3 billion plus out of the, the state budget, and it's, it's brutal, it's a bloody process, it really is. There's no other way to describe it. And unfortunately, this last week, we had learned from the Legislative Budget Commission, and yesterday, they actually met in Tallahassee, that we're looking at a $3 billion shortfall over three years. And that's, that's, that's bad news, that's really bad news, especially for education, because two-thirds of our state budget is education and healthcare. And there's just no other way to, to cut $3 billion unless you're going to raise taxes, which this legislature will not, and this Governor will not. The only way to, to get to those cuts is to look at where you can cut the most meat off the bone, and that's going to be education and healthcare. Yesterday, they, they reaffirmed what they had announced the previous week, that our Legislative Budget Commission, our state economists who are predicting what our, what our revenue forecasts are going to look like for the next several years, and they, they budget, they look three years out so that we can plan, which is, you know, good, good fiscal conservative budgeting process, and our legislature is very, very fiscally conservative politically. This next year, we're looking at about a $7.5 million gain in the budget, but that's a rounding error for an $82 billion budget. And then, and I would say not even a rounding error, but, and then we have a, they're predicting a, right now, $1.3 billion shortfall for the following fiscal year, and then the third fiscal year, a, a $1.8 billion shortfall. So if you add those numbers up, you're roughly $3 billion. They're not going to take those cuts in one year, I would imagine. They're going to spread them out to try and ease the pain as much as possible over a three-year period, I would guess. So if you do that math, we're looking at a billion-dollar cut for each of the next three fiscal years, which is, is going to be brutal. So we're going to have to be, we're going to be doing two things. We're going to be playing quite a bit of defense to be protecting the funding that we have, and, and also play defense against reorganizing the, the chairs on the ship that could be to our detriment and to the other school district's detriment. And then we're also going to need to be smarter about what we ask for, and by smarter, I mean we need to be, we need to be strategic, given the political climate and given the people who are in charge, and then we need to be smart about how we ask for it. And that goes back to the, back to the ROI discussion that I mentioned earlier, is we're going to have all 67 school districts asking for their projects that they're going to think is the best project in the state, and we have to be smarter about the way that we ask for it, and justifying those asks through ROI and the investment that will, that will create an ROI will put us ahead of the pack, because not everybody's doing that. And that's, that's a process that we'll walk you through as we, as we start to get to those projects. Legislative landscape is going to change some more, too, Mr. Chairman, as we approach the November election. There are some really key races at play. Locally here, not so much, those, those seats have now essentially been decided. Most of them were just primary races, and there's not really a competitive general. Other parts in the state aren't like that, and there are some races that have significant general elections that could play a big role in, in education. Manny Diaz, for example, who is, you know, I, I think will be a education chairman in the House, has a very tight race in Miami. So there, there are races around the state that will impact what the, what the legislature looks like, but not to the extent that it's going to create any type of, of, of political turnover to the Democrats. It's still going to be solid Republican majorities in both the House, Senate. Obviously, the Governor and Cabinet staying the same, they'll be, they'll be running in 2018, and, and there's a lot of jockeying around about who's going to, who's going to run for what on the statewide offices. But on the legislative side, the one thing that is a challenge for us, and I'm sure you can appreciate, is that we're going to have about 43 new House members. There's only 120 of them, so it's over a third of the House members are going to be brand-new, who have never dealt with these issues before, who don't know what FEFP mean, who've, you know, who've, who've never dealt, not just with education, but any issues. Some of them, you know, may have some experience in the education realm, but generally speaking, most of them are going to be newbies, and will be, you know, tasked with, with, with going, going over these issues with them. Your local delegation is not really in that, in that position, which is nice. Randy Fine will be new, but is a very intelligent guy, and I think will get up to speed quickly, and has a passion for education, which is, which is great. But the Tom Goodsons and Debbie Mayfields in all of the world have been around for a while and understand the issues, and so now we just need to facilitate those relationships and, 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 and move forward with them in a, in a, in a more collaborative way. The Senate is also experiencing quite a bit of turnover. There's going to be 18 new Senate seats out of 40, so I mean, they're almost half are going to be new. Now, the good news is, a lot of those people running for Senate are House members, so they have some institutional knowledge and background, but, you know, they're going to be finding their way around the Senate, and, and so there'll be some challenges around that as well. So this, this first committee weeks in session is going to be a lot of educating them, getting them up to speed of, of what all these issues are, because these are going to be new to them. So is there any other questions I can answer about the legislative landscape? I don't want to go too.
Debbie has asked, Debbie has said she's asked to be on education and thinks that's where she'll be placed.
Which would be fantastic.
Yeah.
And that would be fantastic.
She feels pretty confident about that one.
Yeah, good, good. We need to get, you know, Randy Fine or Tom Goodson or one of the other House members on the Education Committee in the House as well, and have them make that ask. I mean, obviously, having a local delegation member on those committees is critical, so that's good to hear.
She's not taking November for granted, but.
Yeah, yeah. I think she'll be in good shape.
She feels pretty confident.
Yeah, yeah.
You talked about the budget shortfalls over the next three years, but I don't think you touched upon what the speculation was for those shortfalls. Are there economic changes? Are there other higher priorities? What's, what's impacting that, those projections?
From what I've read, it's a combination. You know, there have been about $800 million in tax cuts from the last two years. So we've, you know, we've cut taxes, number one. There's been a, a, we've had challenges with, this summer with, on tourism, we've taken some hits with Zika and, and people, less people traveling to the state are canceling. The, the estuary discharges have hurt the East Coast and West Coast on the people canceling their trips because they, you know, believe that the beaches are algae-laden from what they're reading in the news. There's a variety of factors that the economists look at. So the unfortunate part about all that is that although revenues are going down, you know, the need for, for education dollars and healthcare dollars continues to go up as our populations grow. So entitlements are still, you know, growing steadily as Florida grows. I mean, we're the third-largest state now and, and growing at about, you know, 15 to 7900 people a day, and so those program needs are going up, but the, the actual revenue side is not, and we've got a legislature that doesn't believe in raising taxes and has cut them over the last several years, and that's, that's leaving a mark.
So since there is growth and property values are going up, and our revenue is tied to millage set by the state, not by us, I always like reiterating that for the public, that would imply that you're foreseeing them continuing to cut our millage as property values go up, because that, otherwise, their revenue for education would continue to rise.
I don't know if they'll cut it. I don't see them raising the cap. I don't know if they'll actually reduce the millage rate. I, I probably don't see that happening, but I don't see them, you know, raising the cap to allow you to increase the millage rate. I think they'll, you know, they clearly see that as a tax increase, but I don't see them, I, I don't see them neutraling it out, if that's what you're, if that's what you're asking.
Just stay away from the rollback rate.
Yeah.
Right.
If they don't reduce the millage, then the revenue goes up.
Sure, yeah. It's all, with all this, it's all how you define a tax increase, right? That's how, you know, a lot, a lot of this is, you know, who's in charge at the time and how they define a tax increase. But I think rolling it back to a revenue-neutral level, there'll be a lot of pressure, obviously, not to do that this year, given the current budget forecast and the, the cuts that will need to be made, but I, I, in my opinion, I don't think that happens. I mean, you guys might disagree, but I don't.
Well, this year, they killed us with the rollback rate. If they had just left it alone, that rollback rate cost us, just this county alone, $14 million. If they had just gone with the rate.
Yeah.
Instead of the rollback rate, which I don't, can't recall the last time they've done that, but if they had just gone with the regular rate, we would have had $14 million.
Yeah, I'm sure election-year politics probably, you know, played a role into that. I mean, I, I think this, this, the, the magnitude of the shortfall, I think, has caught them by surprise, too. It's such a big number, they're going to look at everything. I mean, you've got, you've got a, you've got a little juxtaposition going on, too, between the two bodies, where the Senate is obviously less apt to cut than the House. I think the House is really looking at this as an opportunity to make cuts and really pour through the budget.
But now, next year, it's going to be even a bigger issue. Once they get into that rollback mode, then next year, when they do the comparison, it's just the math now is going to get harder and harder. We need to get them to stop looking, get them out of that rollback mode.
Part, part of that, though, Ms. Nisi, if you remember in the discussions, initially, they weren't looking at rolling back the rate this year, they were looking at, at holding steady, so we would see a revenue increase. But then there was the argument about the fact that too much of the education funding was coming from local revenue sources, and so in a battle.
Last, last minute.
They decided that rather than supplementing that local revenue with state-level funding, they would just take away the money. Instead of, instead balancing the origin of the funds, they decided that they would just decrease what they were going to give us in response to that argument, so.
Right, and that's what we need to stop.
Well, but that goes back to a lot of what we have discussed in the past, and you have to be careful what you ask for.
True.
Because a lot of times, that is turned around to, to be something not what they were looking for initially, and I think that's what happened with that this year.
Okay. I want to touch on a few expectations before Board Members get into some more specific areas, and I wanted to do this so that Board Members can chime in if they agree with this. I believe they do. Our previous lobbying firm, Nixon Associates, want, great guy, but represented about 25 school districts. I don't know how or why we ever thought that there was going to be much focus on unique or specific needs for our school district, which is something we, we want to focus on, is what, what's unique for us. You've touched upon that, you need to learn that, and we need to relay to you that what those things are. Being part of the Central Florida School Board Coalition, which I'm going to be the incoming chair for that coalition, and being in FSBA, of course, representing FAS, we've, I think all agree that, you know, it, and, and as you said, aligning priorities so that there's a bigger message. And we've talked about that, and while that is important, and we'll talk about some of those things that are important, I don't think those things necessarily need to lead, in my opinion, lead our parade, but absolutely need continued support in our conversations. I think we need to ask specifically and, and look to you for advice as far as conflicts of position on issues and, and how we address them. I, I know we may, if there's something we need, and you think there's a conflict maybe with another school district or another client, or with a legislator's other interests, we, we're going to need that advice so that we don't stub our toe or create enemies along, along the way. So that continual input from you, of course, will be incumbent on us of expressing those things to us. And you also mentioned very astutely playing defense, protecting monies we have, so, and as, assuming you're aware, protecting the federally connected change to the FEFP that this county worked on so hard over the past few years, and Senator Altman was able to actually implement. He considers that now his biggest legacy.
Yeah.
For his, for his tenure previously. He thinks that there's concern about that, we need to keep an eye and play defense on that just in case, although if it's that hard to get something in the FEFP, I'm hoping it's even harder to get it out of the FP. So I just wanted to mention that, in case any of the Board Members wanted to touch upon any of these expectations or add their own expectations as we go along. And I know some Board Members have some specific topics of interest. Mr., Craig, if you'd like to start, I know, I know, we've had some interesting conversations on, on capital and things of that nature. Mr. Craig, if you can.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Craig. I think, and I'm not sure what discussions you had with Dr. Blackford regarding, you know, our evolved strategic plan, but we're well into that process in identifying the, how the funding internal to our district supports that strategic plan. Each one of us are champions of a certain area. I happen to have facilities and capital management with Mr. Peter, if you're right there, as the area that I'm kind of focusing on. And one of the things that, that we have obviously identified is that shortfall of capital funding and, and the way that the state has set up the model, if you call it a model, because there truly isn't a much, you know, like FEFP is a, is a per-student appropriation based, or amount based on that formula. We don't do the same thing for capital. We had some discussion with Representative Friesen last year and a couple others, who were actually receptive to the idea of creating a formula that would then follow a student where they needed to go. We believe that that truly would, would assist us quite a bit in narrowing that shortfall and ensuring that every student is, the facilities are able to support that student going forward. We have a new CFO, and, and I've asked her to, you know, start thinking about this, she's got a lot more on her plate as well, but this is an area where I think we can lead, we can have a solution. As you know, bringing a solution to the table is much easier to get things moving if you actually have something that works. We saw that in federally connected funds. Certainly, it may not come out exactly the way that you bring it, but at least getting the discussion point going rather than just a theoretical, having some hard concept is helpful. So it's a thing that I would really like to pursue. I'd like to, you know, we kind of saw a, I hate to use the word a cheek in the armor, but it is, it's a sliver of opportunity with some people that in the past may have been a little anti-capital funding, and the agreement that there is a better way to do it, we just need to find it. And so we, that, that's an area I'd like to continue to explore, figure out which members are amenable to that and which would have some interest in that, and then obviously some supportive things from around the state as well as we kind of, we kind of have, because, you know, our, our capital funding model is, it hurts. We attempt to do the best we can. A lot of this has been pushed back to the, to the local level, and, and that's fine if, if you want to just admit it, that that's the way it's going to be, but putting mandates on top of things and new, and building codes and that type of thing from the state that are then not funded are things that we need to really address, and I think by tying it to the individual student, we can certainly start to make progress in that direction.
And I'll just add, since Mr. Craig and I have spoken to numerous legislators together last session about that, we're well aware of the fact that the charter school capital issue is a very high priority through legislators, so that solution would have to somehow be fair and equitable to them also, or I'm sure we'd never even get off first base. We're aware of that. Mrs. Belford?
Although I know that we have, we have all been told that we need to just stop discussing it because it's not going to go anywhere, I still think that we need to reiterate the fact that probably the most detrimental aspect of education in Florida is our accountability system. And we may not get movement, but I also don't think that we need to stop reminding them that that's detrimental to education as a whole. Not that we need to put an enormous amount of effort, because like I said, I understand it probably is not going anywhere, but I don't want them to rest and think that we are appreciative of the accountability system as it stands. So I think important to continue to have those conversations to some extent. The other thing that I think could be very valuable to us here in Brevard, we have a lot of industry growth right now, and one of the things that we are running into is we have a gap in students that are ready to enter into those industries. And so looking at opportunities for funding special projects and programs to help support that growth, I think, is critical for the community as a whole, because we, we've had many conversations around that and the importance of making sure that we're aligning and, and supporting those industries as they come in. So I think anything around that would, would probably be a good thing for us to look at in more depth. And then I'm sure Ms. Nisi and Ms. Henderson will share some of the other things that have been discussed. Neese and Ms. Henderson will share some of the other things that have been discussed along the way.
Mrs. Neese?
A couple of things. I'm going to, I hate these microphones.
[laughing]
I'm going to piggyback off of what Mrs. Belford just said. I'd actually like to see, and it goes along, Nick, with what I think you said, what the governor's looking for on, on return on investment. There's a lot of ideas that I know companies have. We're in a unique situation here on the Space Coast. We've got a lot of companies here that are looking for a certain type of employee. We've got a lot of high tech here. We've got students that are looking for those types of opportunities, but finding a way for the two to connect. What it takes to seed money to do that. We have certain types of career academies here, but in order to open that type of academy, it takes seed money. And so, what I'd like to see the governor or the legislator to come up with is some sort of grant or seed money opportunity where the company that's here, the school that's here, could come together. It reminds me of the seed money that's given to charter schools, where you get X number of dollars, and you come together, the company and the school, and you open it together. And the school gets that opportunity for kids, and the company gets that opportunity for employees. And I see that as a win-win for both. I mean, we have a group of kids that graduate from school that are lost. I happen to be a mother of one of those. We have a group of kids that I believe were, were failing, that aren't ready to go off for school. They think they are, but there's no place for them. College isn't quite working. And then we have these company, but they're hard workers. They don't want to flip burgers for the next 40 years. And we have these companies that want these hard-working kids. They're very tech savvy or so forth. We need an enclosed environment to put those kids to work and teach them the skills. I think it'd be a great return on investment, but we need the seed money for that. And we have, you know, we have everything here for it. We just need to get everybody together to do it. That's the type of ROI, I think, that the governor's looking for, and I think we're the right place for it. So, that's something that I think would be, this would be the right place for it. And has all the right ingredients. We just need to light a fire under it. So, that's one thing I'm really excited about, that I think we could really be a showcase for. So, that's one of mine. That's one of my passions. As you can see, I get really excited because I have a son that I know would be perfect for that. So, that's one.
Yeah.
The second one doesn't cost any money, which ought to get everybody excited about, is in, in 12 years, that the number-one thing law that drives me crazy in this state is the sunshine law. And 95% of it, I agree 100%, because too much, especially in Tallahassee, goes on behind closed doors that ought to be public. But the one thing that has driven me crazy as a board member is when it comes to personnel issues. When it comes to personnel, there, we ought to be able, as a board, to be able to go behind closed doors and discuss certain personnel issues. The most recent example is, we had a principal in our district that did some bad things. And it was very frustrating that the five of us couldn't go behind closed doors with our superintendent and our attorney and talk about how to heal this district. It took extra time for him to meet with each one of us separately, as opposed to be able to talk about those. It was frustrating that the five of us couldn't do part of his evaluation behind closed doors. And what I find is that we hinder progress as opposed to doing good things for this district. And so, I'm not asking for the sunshine law, for us to be able to do what Tallahassee gets to do, because they do far more than they should, but just a little tweak so that when it comes to personnel issues, because so much now, we worry about what we say in public because of legality issue of it. But when you have staff doing bad things, the five of us need to meet with the superintendent and the attorney and talk about it. Nothing more, but so that they don't have to meet with us separately and spend a whole day talking with us separately so that the five of us can talk about it and move forward. That's one thing I've learned in 12 years, that if you could fix that one thing, it would make worlds of difference for the next 12 years for these guys.
12 more years?
12 more years for you guys.
[laughing]
And I look at these guys, and I'm like, 12 more years. And the return on investment is, I think you'd get a lot more done and...
Efficiency.
Efficiency, which is, which is money.
Absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Henderson?
And just to piggyback on that, and it, it wouldn't be done intentionally, but obviously, if you're telling the same story five times, we don't necessarily know that everybody got the same story.
Right.
And some questions that I may have asked may have sparked some other conversation. That's why we have group talk. And on important personnel issues, I just, you know, that, that's a free one. That would just make it better for all districts. I mean, now we can do, you know, executive session for, you know, negotiations, but this would really be an improvement on that.
And keep it limited. I, I understand. I'm very passionate about the sunshine law. I wish our legislators had to follow, follow it. Life would be much simpler. But just on personnel issues, because of some ugly things that have happened through the years, it has really tied their hands that they can't get us all in one room and say, hey, guys, this is what's happened. This is what we're going to do. Any questions? And they get the five of us. They spend a whole day tracking us down.
Well, the crazy thing is that the only reason we can't have that conversation is because we vote on hiring and termination. Yet, we really can't not support the superintendent's recommendation for those things without having sound, factual reason, or we open ourselves up for liability. It's kind of a formality that we have no control over. If we didn't have to have that vote on hiring or, or firing, we could then have that conversation, because we can talk about anything that we're not going to vote on. And that's where that hinges on, yet we really can't change that decision, or we're going to get ourselves in trouble. You can't have that conversation in public, because like Ms. Neese said, there's, the liability would be huge. Maybe the solution is just saying, well, you don't have to, you don't have to vote on that stuff. I don't, I don't know how that would work that out, but that's the kind of the exclusion I think you're referring to.
Yeah, but it goes back to that return on investment. Everybody's job would be more, you know, more efficient, and it just, there's just, anymore with personnel issues, there is so much more that goes on in personnel. If you guys are attorneys, I don't have to tell you that. That's why you make the big bucks. There's so much more that goes on in personnel now that has to be handled, especially in private. It just makes more sense for us to be able to have personnel meetings, short, sweet into the morning, and make sure Harold keeps us legal. We don't cross any boundaries.
Good job, Harold.
Mrs. Henderson?
Okay. One of the things that has always irritated me since I've been on the board and found out about it...
[laughing]
...is that by following state law on transportation...
Oh, God.
...we only get about half of what it costs our district.
Forty-seven percent.
Forty-seven percent is what we get from the state. You know, if the state mandate was fully funded, we would end up with another $13 or $14 million. That could be helpful in our district, along with that other $14 million we lost on the rollback rate. So, they got to stop doing that, too.
Three billion-dollar shortfall.
Yes. And, and I must say that the numbers that you brought us today with the shortfall, $3 billion over the next three years, is distressing, because, you know, I don't understand how anybody thinks that we're supposed to be able to provide more programs, to build schools, to provide raises for employees, to do anything in a positive direction when everything keeps being taken away from us. And, and I'm sure you know that Brevard County was number one three years in a row. We, we love being number one, but not on the list of double-digit property value declines.
Yeah.
So, you know, when you lose 65% of your capital budget, it takes a big hit. So, when we look at the capital, if we were to raise money, if we were able to get more local funding to do something locally, we really don't feel like we should have the restrictions put on us if it's district money. If, if our district wants to build more science labs with the money that we raise locally, we should be able to do that and not do it per the state.
Right.
Yeah. Also, you know, one of the other things that gets in the way of us doing business is that we have, we have capacity for our schools, but it's not necessarily calculated on our program capacity. For instance, it looks like I have room in one of my schools because it has 750 seats, and I'm only using 700, and 700 of them. But the reality is, I have no classrooms left, because I've got many programs, like some of our LP classes and some of our special needs classes, that only allow for 10 people in a classroom, 10 students in a classroom.
Which are state-mandated.
Another state, state mandate. But if you're sitting in a classroom that was built for 25 kids, it looks like I have room in the school, when in fact I don't. So, if we could calculate on program capacity, from a district perspective, it gives us a better view of what we really have. Dane, do you want to talk to that at all? Did I?
I thought you did pretty well.
Okay.
You, you've captured the, the essence of the problem, correct?
The essence of it.
We've, as a, as a matter of perspective, we've tried for 10 years with the Office of Educational Programs, I'm sorry, Educational...
Facilities.
Facilities. And they've met with us, but they said that the legislature simply doesn't have the, the interest in allowing program capacity, because they've funded on what they call FISH capacity. Florida Inventory of School Houses, FISH is the state database, and it is the, it is the basis of our design of the original school and the capacity for that school. And it, it is what they believe that they've funded. So, they're reluctant to reduce that capacity by allowing a program capacity.
Thank you, Dane. And then, one last thing to piggyback on what Mrs. Belford said. You know, one of the things, since I've been on the board, the first six or seven years, we went from FCAT to Next Generation Sunshine State Standards, to FCAT II, to FSA. Those kind of changes in the six-year span is not healthy, not only for our teachers, but for our students. There is no consistency. There, it's confusing. The parents are all upset, and you can't keep changing that sort of stuff. So, to piggyback on what she was saying about, yes, let's keep our eye on assessments, but also, we, we really need to have them refrain from making any more assessment-type changes. Unless, of course, they would like to send the test home to our parents, that would be nice, because we don't like, as a parent, I want to see what my kids are taking the tests on.
Yeah.
You know, those kinds of things I would be for. But as far as like changing the standards and changing the test and all that sort of stuff, we really need to refrain from, and, and have some, you know, we talked about the accountability system. When, when you make all those changes, nothing means anything anymore, because you've made so many changes that we don't really know where we are. And so, we have to have years of just letting it play out.
Time.
And that's all I have.
All right, let's move on to Dr. Blackburn. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. This would be a great, as I sat here and listened to the conversation, it would be a great time, and I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge all the work that Mrs. Irwin did to get us here, from facilitating the RFP process, the interview, the selection, the liaison between the district and Capital City to date, and the canvassing of board member priorities and senior cabinet member priorities based on their functional unit. The next portion of the presentation is going to fly right by, because it's essentially kind of highlighting the long-term and short-term goals, based on the conversations you just had, and then circling back with the board to make sure, in fact, that we give Capital City enough information for them to go out and create the platform and the approach. So, starting with short-term goals. Short-term goal number one, it was already mentioned, but there's a, there's an umbrella topic there, assessment accountability, and what promises to be our new accountability system, ESSA. And, and in that is, with ESSA, it's having the ability for this district to have true, authentic engagement and input into what the creation will become. I'll, I'll just take a side note, and I'll meet with FADS next week, but we've already put together a position document on that, and we don't feel that the, the input to date has been authentic enough and engaging enough. So, it's, it's allowing for that. And then, we could probably spend quite a bit of time talking about the accountability system, the changes to assessment, but there's the umbrella topic there. The next short-term goal, and it was already mentioned here, but we have a strategic priority in, in increasing opportunity and access to our phenomenal programs, our district-wide. We're challenged because of the geography of our district and some transportation funding formulas, or lack thereof. And so, there is a, and there are different approaches, and I'm sure the board will discuss it, but there's an opportunity there to really focus on that as a primary, short-term goal. And then, last but not least, and it was already mentioned here several times, capital funding. And the, the cost-per-student workstation piece that, that Ms. Henderson and, and Mr. Theodore mentioned, our millage rates and having to compete with other entities, i.e. charters, there's a whole capital funding bucket there. Moving on to more long-term considerations, it's, again, it's already been mentioned in several pieces of today's conversation, but making sure that we, one, have relationships with key lawmakers locally and across the state, but perhaps a, a change in, in philosophy from what most educators typically do. Most educators typically come up with what's right, and then we go to our state capital and beat them to death into submission. But a sort of a different approach in taking advantage of the opportunity around priorities outlined by our state-elected officials, and seeking opportunity to align our priorities to their priorities, be more potentially helpful and collaborative, as opposed to, you know, just critical. That's probably just an, in general, education misstep that we seek to correct. And then, last, long-term, it, it was, again, uniquely situated here in Brevard to be able to create public-private partnerships, K-12 private industry, K-12 to higher ed, in order to make sure every one of our kids walk across, all of our kids walk across our stage and, and have someplace meaningful to go to become a positive contributor back to society, the job market, and, and our responsibilities there. Some add-ons, some financial others, and, and these both may fall into some of those other goals I just mentioned. One, from a pure academic perspective, we opened up this last year, the first community school, I believe, in the state. That is, is two pieces. One, admitting the fact that what happens outside of Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, is, is very, very impactful on education from an economic perspective. And so, doing our level best in order to meet those social and emotional needs of our students. The community school is, is a great concept, very costly. And so, if the board approves, then we would find a place for that. And then, there was also cuts in funding to our adults with disabilities and funding appropriations across the state that we were not able to take advantage of. So, again, if the board is approval of that, we would find an appropriate place in there for that. Again, high-level summary of what we believe board versus cabinet priorities are. And I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Ziegler, and board members, to make sure, in fact, we're on the right page and Capital has all the right information.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. It's, it's interesting. People say something, they will move on, and then it triggers more thoughts. You know, so it's good that we'll, we'll come back around and board members can add in as, as needed. You know, so it's good that we'll come back around and board members can add in as needed. You know, I saw this slide presentation multiple times before we got here, but it's until you start having the conversation and start listening to some of your, the way you put things, that you start strategizing partnerships. And how do you get things done? The, and I didn't even have any plans on speaking about the community school concept, but I'm going to because I just had some thoughts all of a sudden. One of those thoughts come in, it starts with, we've actually had some people in the community who took objection to Dr. Blackburn speaking so strongly about the importance of addressing social-emotional needs of students, saying, well, that's not the place for schools to be doing that. We need to be just taking care of the education, the ABCs, I'm sure you've heard that argument. But I believe that the point really is, is that if we're going to be held accountable for success, for student success, we've got to address whatever is blocking that success. And if it's social-emotional, then that's up to us to get that student to be successful. So how do we go about achieving more of those great programs? And I'm wondering if maybe there's a place on, in another part of the state budget as opposed to education, maybe in healthcare somehow, for addressing some of those needs. Maybe we need to elaborate more on how that community school partnership works, we can do that offline, and maybe you can say, you know what, I think there's another place for that to emerge from as opposed to education. So I just throw that out there. And the adult with disabilities, apparently there was some funding up until several years ago that used to go to all school districts to partner with other charitable organizations that addressed adults with disabilities, like Brevard Achievement Center, Easter Seals and all that. But I've been cautioned, you've got to be careful how you ask for things because my Director of Adult Ed does a phenomenal job in Brevard County, says if you don't ask for it right, and you do look for that funding to be restored, it might be restored out of existing adult ed money. And then he'll never talk to me again, and so we can't, we can't go down that road because I don't want him to lose any funding. Yeah, I caught something you said earlier, and this piggybacks what Mrs. Belford and Mrs. Nisi were talking about, about career programs, and I just want to make sure, I said, when you were talking about, Chris, you're talking about New College, and that you, that the large corporations were talking about a need for programs and big data, and I know what you mean by that. They used to be big when I was young and I was a programmer, that we were all in that big databases and manipulating data. Nobody seems to do that anymore, and I understand that need. And by partnering with, or I guess an ask from large corporations, you were able to have success in that area? Is that how that worked? You rallied, you rallied big business as well as the college?
Yeah, so basically, this goes back to what Nick said on return on investment. To have any luck in getting that funding approved, we needed to show there was buy-in, that there was a need for those students. So when President Donald O'Shea is the President at New College, and he's a mathematician, that's his background. And he's, when he brought it to us, we're like, okay, this sounds great and all, but what's, you know, is there a need? So he got all these letters from all these CEOs from all these big corporations in Florida, got buy-in, and we were able to present that to the appropriations staff, you know, the appropriations folks, and show them, yeah, there is a need. So what I meant by that is, you have to, by getting that buy-in from the, those corporations, by getting those partnerships, to be able to have those internships set up for those master students, to help have that streamlined from graduation to the job market, that's your return on investment. Because, yeah, you can create all the degrees you want, but you also need to be able to show that there's a need for them in the workforce. And by, you know, having that, the partnerships and the relationships and the partners with the, with those corporations, that's what helped. So that's what I was getting at with it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the, one of the, when Dr. Blackburn and Michelle came to Tallahassee and told us about this career development program, that was probably one of the most exciting things that I heard out of, you know, the entire conversation, and you guys seem equally excited about it. And even though it's more of a long-term goal, the reason why it's long-term is because it takes time to set it up. And you even have it on your, Michelle has it on this PowerPoint, it says fulfilling current job needs. Those are the key words there, fulfilling current job needs. So what Chris is saying is, these companies in the area were saying, look, we're looking for people who can do big data, there's nobody around, we don't, we can't hire anybody, like companies are saying that. So filling a specific niche and demonstrating that companies have positions open in these certain areas is where the money will flow. And that's kind of what we would say to you here, you're in such a unique area, and you guys addressed this. I mean, this is what, really, your area is what the governor and the legislature wants Florida to become, quite frankly. Your high-tech jobs, your manufacturing jobs here, you have, you're really a catalyst for the type of growth that we'd like to see, I say we, but the Capitol would like to see, the folks in the Capitol would like to see across the state. So you're in a very unique position to pilot a program like that. It just has to be very well thought out, it has to be very well planned, and that's probably a next-year, a next-year type initiative where we have CEOs from companies lined up, where we can gather support from the governor and legislative leaders, because it's precisely the type of thing that they'd want to support, but you have to show where the need is first, and it has to come from the companies. Then you have to show how you'll fulfill that need through the school district, and you have to show how much it's going to cost. So those are the three steps, and we're in step, you know, we're in step one now, but I think it's, I mean, I commend you for looking at it because I think it's probably the most exciting thing that I've heard from a school district, period. And again, you're uniquely situated geographically with your businesses in this community to be able to do something like that. Another thing that was mentioned on, if I may, Mr. Chairman, on a couple of the things that were mentioned, if I may comment on a couple of the priorities of some of the board members. Mr. Craig, you brought up facilities and capital management. I mean, that's, you know, we'll look to you guys on how we can best reform that process, but you can, you can be certain that it is going to be looked at over the next year and two years because of the budget shortfall. Facilities, capital funding is constantly decreasing because of those revenue sources, the way they're garnered are decreasing. And then with a budget shortfall, there won't be a lot of general revenue to plug the gaps. So modifying that will be, if we can lead the way, absolutely 100%, and I think using the Central, the Central Florida School Board Association and all 67 superintendents, Dr. Blackburn with your leadership there, and trying to corral them around a particular idea would be huge. And those type of initiatives take several years. I mean, that's just not something you get done in a year. It's like, you know, it's moving a boulder up a mountain, and you've got to keep pushing, it's going to roll back, keep pushing, it's roll back, and then in a few years, you tip it over the edge and you get reformed.
So tiring.
It's very tiring, yes, it's very tiring. But that's what it takes to get large initiatives like that done, but those are the type of things that are legacy issues. So love to work with you on that. On accountability, we hear you loud and clear, number one, and we're not the only school district, right, in that position, so that's another one when we talk about coalitions that we need to focus on, holding the line there. I mean, we can't keep changing. I mean, if you look at actuarial analyses for any business, it's five to seven years they want to see before they're even looking at making any changes, because that's the only way you can average out data, and here we are making changes, you know, every other year. So it's, I think that's something we can all work together, coalition-wise, we talked about earlier, to hold the line on. On ESSA, there is, we did gather a little bit of intel this week, and when Dr. Blackburn and Michelle were up in Tallahassee, we met with the governor's office, their policy folks on this, but the Department of Education right now is in really just in hold, on hold. They're waiting for the feds to come out with rules and guidelines on how the states can implement the reforms, and they haven't yet, and so the Department of Education is waiting for direction. Our education commissioner did send a letter recently to the feds outlining some of the concerns or comments on the rulemaking process, and we can get you a copy of that, Michelle and Dr. Blackburn, and you can disseminate that to everybody, kind of see what the Department of Education is thinking. But some of the biggest fears the state has right now is that the rules that the feds come up with around ESSA will change the way we grade our schools, you know, and they'll have to go back through that process, and so they'll probably seek a waiver around that. And, you know, we go back to, it's the same old accountability arguments of why are we changing these things every year? Now, this is a federal issue, so we're, you know, but the state is pushing back on that through some of these comments, and we'll have you look at those, but I don't think that's going to be a 17 issue, that's going to be an 18 issue by the time the feds come out with their rules and guidelines. On sunshine law, I hear you loud and clear on that, too. You know, those are complicated issues, and we can, there's some really key staff people in both the House and Senate that deal with sunshine law issues. They're very bright people, they know it very well, and we can talk around those. The questions typically around sunshine law are, you know, well, what's considered a closed-door issue and what wouldn't be? So in this particular instance, you reference, how do we apply that standard across all cases involving HR? And where does the line cut off? And there are people, just quite frankly, philosophically, even though they know that it's cumbersome for you to deal with, they think the benefit of having it in the sunshine outweighs the cumbersome nature and lack of efficiencies of having to do it on an individualized basis. But that's something we can definitely explore with the people who are really sound. Public records laws are tough, you've got to file a separate bill, and it requires a two-thirds vote of both houses constitutionally to pass, so, because you're creating a constitutional exception. And then they're renewed every five years, so. But that's something we can get input back on from the staff there who are really smart on that. On transportation, we talked about capacity in some of the schools. You know, the next few years, getting original about how we're going to be seeking funding is going to be critical. So if we, if we do have capacity, let's say to the north, being such a long county you guys are, seeking transportation funding to be able to send kids to other schools as opposed to building new facilities because of the lack of capital dollars and the lack of interest in doing that is something that could be, you know, be considered an original approach to actually mitigating increases in costs by not, by putting off some capital investments by utilizing existing capacity if there is some. I don't know if there is, but that's the type of ideas that we could seek funding around to work within the existing structure and political dynamic that we're given right now, so. And then the last thing, I think Chairman Ziegler, I think you mentioned it, but looking for innovative ways in different pots of money that can benefit the school, whether they be healthcare dollars on the social services side, mental health side, or whether they be environmental dollars from an environmental budget for issues you may have. I know Speaker Chris Afoli helped with some of that last year, pulling money out of other pots of dollars as opposed to just education. So as we prioritize what these initiatives are, we're going to go after, we'll look for innovative ways to try and draw from areas that aren't just from education to maximize our chances for success.
You got real excited there, also, like we do, we talk about career programs.
I love it.
I just wanted to say, you talked about the steps. If Dr. Blackburn hasn't tooted his own horn, he's already well into that first step in establishing relationships with all the business leaders and meeting with them and finding out what their needs are. We've been, we've been reaching out, and as you know, with the governor visiting here like every other week, I'm surprised he hasn't bought a condo.
These jobs are his favorite area, yeah.
I think he knows all our business leaders in the community, including John's wife at Craig Technologies, who's done a great job of getting Brevard on the radar screen. I think that's probably the unique alignment of opportunity that we need to have more conversation over. I think we all agree that'll work.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think it's not only an innovative idea, it's one that not only I get excited about, and you guys get excited about, I think people in Tallahassee will get excited about. And one thing I will say, Dr. Blackburn and Michelle both, when we had them up in Tallahassee, I mean, you've got great people working for this district because the rapport that they established very quickly with members of the governor's office and House/Senate staff that they met with while they were up there was fantastic. So I'm glad we have them as allies, too, when they come up, because that's going to be critical for us as we, you know, approach these ideas, and their excitement around that particular idea was not lost on the folks up there and on us, so it's going to be a good team all the way around.
I just wanted to kind of expand even a little further on that, on the career vocational area. You know, my wife sits on Enterprise Florida, and who knows what that's going to look like this year? We'll see how that goes.
We're going to have a tough year.
But they and Space Florida and other economic development agencies do a very great job of touting the capability of what we have as far as drawing families here and making it attractive for companies to move here, which is a great thing. And certainly, you know, education, I think, is probably the silent economic development factor that people don't spend a lot of time thinking about. What we don't, I think, do is connect the dot to the companies that we're recruiting from a aggressive, what do you, how do we leverage the partnership before you even get here? Because establishing the need and establishing that interaction between the two before the company actually gets here, and utilizing the economic development process and the recruitment process to set, you know, those requirements and to set those necessities, I think, could go a long way to forming a, you know, a long-lasting thing. It's great to go back and ask companies right now that are here, you know, what do you need? But when we've got companies that we're actively recruiting or we're trying to keep here for expansion and giving them some sort of, some either tax breaks or some sort of economic incentive to do that, you know, including education as a piece of that, and especially elementary to K-12 education, I think is something that just kind of gets put by the wayside, and we look at it as, well, we've got great schools here in Brevard, so that's why you should move here. But we don't tie those pieces together, and I think we could really, we could really leverage that relationship quite a bit.
I would even say it's, what you said is dead-on, it's even more important because going into the next couple of years, incentive money is just not going to be there, as you know. And Enterprise Florida is under fire by this legislature. The governor's very supportive of Enterprise Florida and the incentive program, but this legislature, particularly the House, is not in favor of incentives. And so we're going to have to find other ways to incentivize companies to come to the state of Florida, and a quality education system that fulfills needs that they would look for in order to relocate here is right on. And as you know, our governor's around, going around to all the different states and poking the other governors in the eye and trying to recruit every major company from every state to Florida, and he sees that as his role, and I agree with him. I think that is a big role of the governor, and I commend him for doing it, is trying to recruit companies to relocate to Florida. But if we're not having the conversation with them, I think this ties into the whole, this whole initiative we're talking about, and why I think it's exciting, why I think the governor would be, would look upon this favorably, is that this can be part of his recruitment tool when he's talking to potential relocating companies, so.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree 100%.
Go ahead. Any other board members?
I would, but if you want to go first, that's fine.
I was just going to say then, you know, maybe we need to be looking at it a little bit differently, and maybe we use Brevard County as a model district, and then they start funding different types of programs into Brevard County to see how it works. I've said for a long time, if you just didn't tie the hands of our teachers and let teachers do what they need to do, if you gave us what we needed to do and to make better programs with all these companies, I think that you would see so much innovation, and it would be not just coming from the school districts, it would be coming from the companies and everybody working together, but it would be, you would have to untie a few things in order for that to occur.
I agree.
I like what Mr. Craig said about trying to foresee economic development, draw businesses down. I know, paying attention, I'm very involved in the chambers, that sometimes that courtship is yours to get these companies to come here. And of course, one of the, aside from asking about education, they were asking about, what does your workforce like? And if you don't have the workforce, then that's limited incentive, even if you give abatements and things of that nature, the workforce is paramount to these companies. And I've mentioned to our executive director of RDC, Linda Weatherman, I said, you know, I said, find out what their needs are, and if it's a workforce need, then come talk to us, and maybe we can start putting things in place ahead of time. Maybe, you know, that's exactly the thing to do, is tie that together, startup programs for workforce support so that they go, hey, look what they're willing to do, provide talent for us if we come to town, as opposed to abatement. I don't know how that would work, I don't know which is more exciting, but it's a different approach, so I think that's a great suggestion.
Thank you.
Great suggestion.
Mrs. Belford?
That was quite the look. I'm going to get on a soapbox in just a second, but before I do that, I want to mention one thing so I don't forget, and that is, you all, you mentioned earlier, Nick, when you were talking about having board members involved coming to Tallahassee, meeting with legislators. And I, although I feel fairly comfortable in saying that we were all probably thinking the same thing, I don't think that any of us verbalized it, and I do believe that any one of us would be willing to go and speak with anyone that you would like us to speak to at any point. So please don't hesitate to say, Michelle, I need a board member in Port St. Lucie, or you know what I mean? We're more than happy to go and meet with whoever we need to meet with to make the initiative successful. So, yes.
It's important. As soon as this election's over, we are going to be hitting the go button on that, so, yeah. Once we know where people end up and what we're faced with, it's critical for that parochial side of the political nature that we're going to need to work.
Absolutely. So my soapbox, and I'll try to keep it short. We have We have the issue of transportation that we mentioned in our legislative priorities, and there are kind of two ways of looking at that transportation issue. There's the equity and innovation access-to-choice programs transportation issue, and then there's the just cover what you require us to provide transportation issue, and I do see them as two separate issues. Forty-seven percent of our costs for transportation are currently funded, and that doesn't include our McKinney-Vento, where we have to ship students from one end of the county to the other. There are lots of factors that are not considered. So, I, I do think that's an issue that needs to be discussed. The other side of that is the choice issue, and it kind of feeds into what Mr. Craig referenced, and that is the importance of education when it comes to economic drivers. As we continue to see all of this industry growth in Brevard County, one of the things that we have to be able to do is not only show them that we can provide a workforce to support those industries, but we also have to show them that we have phenomenal schools to provide education for the families of their employees that they're bringing with them. And with our, our economy in general, and especially in Brevard County, specializing in specific areas, there are types of education, choice schools through equity and innovation, that are, are of more interest to people who are coming from outside areas, that want to know that their child can go to a school where they're going to focus on science, or their child can go to a school that has a gifted program, or their, their child can go to a school that focuses on theater, or, you know, whatever it may be. And so, that aspect of the transportation and, and tying in with it being an economic driver, I think is important, because if we can't offer those programs, or, or, right now, we have great programs, but we can't offer transportation to them because of funding issues, it doesn't do any good for a company to come in and say they're going to the south part of the county if the types of schools that their families are looking for are only located in the north, which is not the truth, by the way, but just as an example.
Was that a little, was that a little dig on the south?
No. Just an example.
District one in the north, or?
District one is in the north, yes, and, and we are lacking in choice options in the north end, but, which is, is why I said it the other way.
Copy that.
So, I do think.
It was a dig.
It was not a dig.
Well, that was, now she's sensitive.
Never sensitive. I do think, though, that it's an important part of the overall formula of being an economic driver, that we have the resources we need to ensure that we're providing the types of education that draw those companies, both for the employees that we create for them and for the education that we provide for the families of their current employees. So, I think that all kind of fits into that conversation, is my only, and now I'll get off my soapbox. And no more digs.
That was well put. I like, I like the way you aligned that to economic development, that was good. Very good. Anybody, any other board members?
You guys covered it.
Dr. Blackburn.
Well, Mr. Ziegler and, and members of the board, if you are satisfied that staff and I understand what your priorities are, then we'll be working with Capitol now through December 13 to do several things. Finalize what our platform looks like and the approach that we will take, start seeking champions, internal and external, right, and, and we understand what that means, and, and get ready for the session. And so, again, if, if you're satisfied with what we understand about your priorities to date, we'll get to work.
Okay. A couple requests. One, Mrs. Irwin has been forwarding to us your little news email you put out on a regular basis. It might be a little, if it's okay, have it come to the board member so she doesn't have to keep remembering to forward it. Also, if it's coming from you, sometimes it's easier for us to filter it and stick it into a folder for that specific thing. Also, if you're going to be traveling in the area, coming to the beach, Chris, if, give us some heads up so it's convenient, and maybe some board members might like to meet with you when you're, when you're available without having any of us make special trips. Let's see if we can align some, some schedules and do that over the next two, three months. And if anybody else, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir. Thanks for having us.
Okay. I think they worked out good. Excellent conversation. Thank you for everybody, and this meeting's adjourned.